Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would, please stand with me over the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Ryska, can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Saroski.
Here.
Mr. Radke.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Thank you. Counsel, we need approval of the agenda.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Arkow.
Move to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, that was a little bittersweet. I gotta say, it was a little bittersweet. Ms. Kosky is not here tonight. I'm informed that over a 36-year career, she's missed two meetings. What an incredible legacy. And she's always the one that made the motion to approve the agenda, always the one that made the motion to approve the consent agenda. So, we're thinking about you, Ms. Kosky, and we already miss you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the first item on our agenda tonight, which is our city manager's report. Our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a very brief report this evening. I wanted to remind everyone that our city offices will be closed on Veterans Day, which is November 11th, next Tuesday, so please take note of that. Refuge collection will not change, so there is not a delay in refuge collection. But most importantly, I wanted to remind everyone of our annual Veterans Day ceremony that takes place at 11:00 a.m. at the Senior Center. Please note that, the Senior Center. It's hosted by our Community Relations Department and collaboration with local veterans group and is open to the public, so we encourage you to attend. We always have great attendance at the event, and it's a very meaningful tribute, so we look forward to seeing everyone there. If you'd like more information, please feel free to call our Community Relations Department or visit our website. Again, that's next Tuesday at 11:00 a.m. And Mayor, let me just conclude by congratulating you and the city council on behalf of administration for your victory in next term on city council. We look forward to working with you and the council to continue the good work going on in the city and to continue to advance the city's long tradition of excellence. And also wanted to, on behalf of administration, welcome our newcomer to council, Robert Majak. And at the same time, again, on behalf of administration, we look forward to paying tribute to Councilwoman Kosky's longstanding career, and the tentative plan for that is November 18th. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda tonight is a presentation, this is a swearing-in ceremony, for new Sterling Heights police officers with a presentation from our Chief of Police, Andrew Satterfield. Chief?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, honorable city council members, city manager Vanderpool, and city attorney Tzabudsky. First, please excuse my facial hair. I'm not typically one to have facial hair in uniform. It's not my style, but we are participating as a department for No Shave November, which is, our charity is raising money for children that have lost their hair due to cancer treatments, and this provides wigs and counseling, so it's a great cause. But that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here to present to you our three newest officers that joined us this past Monday, and we're grateful to have them. If you guys would please stand. From my far right, Lillian Jimenez, Officer Jimenez comes to us all the way from Texas. She worked several years as a dispatcher at Lone Star College, starting in 2015, and then transitioned to the Montgomery County, Texas Sheriff's Department Corrections Officer in 2017. In 2019, she promoted to Montgomery County Sheriff's Deputy, where she also served as a hostage negotiator. Montgomery County is about 40 miles north of Houston, so she has some outstanding police experience. Next, we have Officer Webb, Bradley Webb. He grew up in Dearborn. He has nearly two years of police experience with the Detroit Police Department, and he's currently working on his bachelor's degree in business administration from Cleary University. Officer Webb plans to complete his degree in 2026. Next Officer Webb, we have Kimberly Trendkamp. Officer Trendkamp grew up right here in Sterling Heights and attended Sterling Heights High School. She also comes to us with police experience from the Detroit Police Department and the city of Madison Heights Police Department. She holds a bachelor's degree in business administration from Wayne State University. And now will conduct the swearing-ins ceremony. If you please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bradley Webb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and that of the state of Michigan.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and that of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
And that I will strive to maintain the highest standards of the department.
And that I will strive to maintain the highest standards of the department.
To the best of my knowledge and abilities.
To the best of my knowledge and abilities.
Congratulations. We'd now like to do the pinning of the badges. Officer Jimenez will be having her badge pinned on by her fiance, Tyler, who is also a Montgomery County, Texas constable. We're hoping he comes up to Sterling Heights soon, which he's working on.
It's a long way trip.
Yes. While he's working, oh, go ahead. Officer Webb is having his badge pinned on by his wife, Canice.
It's like that old beat in here.
Especially if you don't do it every day.
He looks like a tough guy. You can just stick it right through there.
You're a good man.
Little blood.
It's a good idea. I just ordered a lot of those.
I'm sure it's much easier off.
Well, especially when they're on. We'll stay close enough.
There you go.
There you go.
And Officer Trendkamp is having her badge pinned on by her father, Gary.
Nice.
No pressure, Gary. Like you all, want to say a few words to counsel?
I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, and I'm excited to end my career with Sterling Heights in about 25 years, hopefully. Yay!
Thank you.
I would like to thank everyone for this opportunity. I'm very happy and thankful to be here, and I look forward to serving this community for a long time to come.
The city really means a lot to me, and I'm beyond thankful that I get this opportunity to serve this community, and I look forward to it. I'm really excited about it.
And I just also want to thank the mayor and city council for your continued leadership and support of our police department, and I invite you down to greet them if you so wish.
Thank you. Chief, counsel?
Mrs. Saroski?
Thank you so much, Mayor Taylor. I thought we were starting.
So, welcome. I am so proud to have new officers. We really, that's one of the big things that I really want to see, is making sure that we get as whole as we can possibly be. And so, Officers Jimenez, Webb, and Trendkamp, thank you for coming and picking Sterling Heights. I'm sorry, other Officer Jimenez, it might be a little bit of a distance for a bit, but, but we have more openings. Just saying. So, but thank you. Sterling Heights is a community that really does value and welcome and support their police officers, all first responders, but today we're talking about the police. So, you guys are wonderfully supported. You will have, we will give you all the tools we can possibly give you. We will make sure that you have our support, the community's support, and feel as welcome as you can, and we're so happy to have you. I'm really happy that we have a native, Officer Trendkamp. It is good to have you and all your families. The reason I always like to speak on, when we get new officers, is that my son is a military officer, a police officer, military police officer. So, he, it's a near and dear to my heart position and job that you guys are doing. It's very tough. It's tough on the family, and we appreciate all of you as family members for supporting your own officers, and now that they're ours, we thank you for sharing them with us. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Saroski. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, horse, I'll make it very quick. You are joining the best police department in the state, and we have very high standards, and we're gonna hold you to those standards, and we're gonna expect a lot. And by expecting a lot, we're gonna provide a lot, and we know you're gonna meet those standards, because we have the community behind you, we have the police department behind you, and you have this council behind you. We entrust you to keep our community safe, and that's very important to us. So, good luck, Godspeed, and I'm sure you're gonna make a wonderful career here. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Well, welcome, welcome to the family. And Officer Trendkamp, I remember your marching band days back in Sterling. So, it's great to see a familiar face, great to see two ladies, and we like our gentlemen officers as well. But, you know, as has been said, this community really embraces its public safety, and you will find that when you're out in the community, that the response is very positive from our community members. I wish you well, please stay safe, and let us know if there's anything we can help you with. But you are in good hands. The officers in our department are top-notch, and we'll make sure that you are up to speed and know the right way to do things. So, welcome and stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Yanez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, congratulations, guys. This is a great opportunity for you. I am a former city employee, so I can tell you that this is a great place to work. City of Sterling Heights is a great employer. You're gonna have a great career here, and we will provide you with all the tools you need, so you can go home at night to your families safely, or in the morning, whatever, whatever shift you have. I am curious, Officer Jimenez, are you familiar with snow?
Yes.
No, okay. I just wanted to check. We have, sometimes we have to drive on snow here in Michigan, so. But it's, again, this is really a great place to work, and I, like I said, we will make sure that you have all the tools, not just the physical tools, but the training, everything you need, to make sure that you have a successful and safe career, and we look forward to having you on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yanez. Mrs. Arkow.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Well, first of all, thank you for choosing Sterling Heights. When you choose Sterling Heights, it also helps us keep our promise to the residents that through our, through our safe street millage, that we will staff our public service to the best of our abilities, so we thank you for helping us keep that promise. Stay safe out there, enjoy yourself while you're here. There are so many different amenities that the city provides, so welcome aboard. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Arkow, and yeah, welcome to the city of Sterling Heights. Great to have a homegrown officer here and an array of officers from Metro Detroit and from well beyond, so we're really excited to have you. If you're not familiar with the city of Sterling Heights yet, you'll find that I think the residents are as pro-police and pro-public safety as you can find, and we live up to that as a city council. We're gonna, as many of us said, we're gonna give you whatever tools you need to do the job effectively and safely, because public safety is the number-one obligation that we have, and we all take it very seriously. So, to your families, I want to thank you for sharing these officers with us, and we know that's a very difficult job for them, and they need your love, their support, your support, and we thank you for that. So, most importantly, we want to thank these three officers for being sworn in today and hope that you have long careers here in the city of Sterling Heights. So, with that, let's give these three new officers a big round of applause. Welcome to lead 'em out. Unless you wanna stay.
They have quite a few little ones that I think.
They've done really well while they're here.
Thank you again, guys, and good luck to all of you. All right. We will move on now to the consent agenda. So, does it take a moment to let the audience work their way out? But is there anyone remaining who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent Seeing none, counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Arkow.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Support.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider an appointment to the City of Sterling Heights Community Alliance. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need... Well, we have one appointment. It is a vacant seat on the Community Alliance. This is a council appointment to a term ending June 30, 2026. Is there anyone who'd like to make that appointment?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to appoint Hunter Noroni to the Community Alliance to a term ending June 30 of 2026, so that the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03, taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Briefly. I know Hunter Noroni. He's an active community member. His entire family lives in the community, including his mother. He just recently moved back. He's very active, and I think he'll be a great member of the Community Alliance.
Wonderful. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item not on the agenda tonight? Not? We'll go to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything tonight?
Mayor, I just wanted to recognize our city clerk and her team for administering a glitch-free election. There's a lot of work that goes into an election, months of planning, and the behind-the-scenes, the detailed work is really an organizational marvel, and our city's renowned for running just exemplary elections that are always implementing best practices, so I wanted to thank the city clerk and her team. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Very well done, Ms. Ryska. Thank you for your hard work and all of your staff and the people that work the polls. It was, it's a big effort every year, and so we thank you for that. Mr. Kuszybski, anything tonight?
No, Mayor.
I'll go on to reports from city council. Mrs. Saroski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, first I would like to, since this is my opportunity, to thank the voters for putting your faith in me again. I really take that as a job to make sure that I do well, and I will listen, and I promise I'm trying to be as even more available as possible to you, so please, reach out, come see me if you would like at office hours that I hold here during the Thursdays. But just to let you know that this, this community is very special, and I'm very, very proud to live here and to be able to represent you, so thank you. I do want to say a few words about Mrs. Kosky. I didn't know for sure she wasn't coming today or not. I knew she was not feeling well, because she was out in the cold, and she doesn't, you know, cold is hard on people, and so it didn't help her at all. But I wanted to just bring up a couple of points. The 10 years that I've been on council with her, she is one of the most incredibly smart women I have ever met, and I say that as one that really admires that in her. She has, she retained dates and times and actions that I very much commend her for, things that I probably myself would have forgotten. She was always good for our, being our local historian. She knew the details of the city better than anyone, and I'm, I really much, as I said, admire her for that. And even after 36 years of being on council, she was extremely dedicated to the city. She came to as many events as she could, more than most people on, at least as much as she could. And on council, it is always, not always easy to make all the events, there's a lot, but she was very dedicated, and not just to events, not just to show face. She also worked behind the scenes. We don't have, we, our police dogs are very much her focus, that we had good police dogs, and as many as we could get, and that was one of her desires and dreams, to make sure that we had those. On a personal note, I want to thank her for being so welcoming and kind to me, not that you guys weren't. Everybody was very welcoming and kind, but she was extremely welcoming and kind. She took me into her home, she was, treated me like her own family, and I, I'm going to, I'm really going to miss her tremendously. Her words, her advice, her kind demeanor. She may have seemed like a very prim and proper lady, but she was the, she, as she was, but she was also extremely warm and kind, and as I said, I'm going to miss her tremendously. So, Deanna, I hope you're watching, but we'll talk some more. I talk, you know, I was able to interact with her today, and I would like to, I'll make sure I reach out to her every day. So, that's, that's that about the election. But being the election, it brought up a couple of questions that came up that I would like to see if we can start addressing. So, without objection, I would like to ask the Community Foundation to come to city council at the 11:18 or the following 12:02 meeting to present info on the status of the property that we have a purchase agreement with them, with, and the progress and plan for that property. If that's, does that sound like?
Can you be a little more specific? What?
Did I not say the CCF?
No.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So, I'm reading and trying not to cry because of D. So, it was about the North Van Dyke and CCF property, so if they could...
What do you want done?
I would like them to present the status on the, executing the purchase agreement, see where, what the permits, or where they are with getting permits for that property, and present it to council, because there were so many questions people have had over the last six months.
When do you want that presented?
On the 18th, 11:18, or the second, or the first meeting in December 12:02, please.
Okay, counsel, is any objection to, well, first of all, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kuszybski, do you have clear direction? Do you have any questions about what's being requested?
Mayor, I think the, the direction, it sounds like what Mayor Protem Saroski's asking for is just a general update on the status of the CCF II project.
Correct.
Which does have a pending purchase agreement, and we can certainly request the CCF attend, and if for whatever reason they're not able to, you know, we're certainly happy to provide an update to city council on the status as well, but we'll reach out and check on their availability, and I'm sure they'd be happy to talk about the project.
Counsel, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mr. Schmidt.
I would just request that it be the first meeting in December, since our, we have such a full agenda on the 18th and, you know, our before meeting, so if possible, I would like to make it the first meeting in December.
Yeah, either one was fine. Yeah, I just wanted to get it.
Anyone else? Okay, then it'll be a presentation on...
An update.
An update from administration at the first meeting in December. Mrs. Saroski.
Thank you. And that's all I have. I, that was my last request, so I appreciate it, and thank you all.
Thank you. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Yanez.
Sure. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I too, first of all, want to thank the clerk and her staff for the excellent job that they always do. It's not easy, but also all the people who work the polls. Those are long days. I, I talked to Megan Ahern today, and she didn't get home until 1:00 in the morning. She was, she was tired. You could tell she was very tired. So, yeah, those are long days. To make this thing run smoothly, it takes a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of planning, and I really appreciate the work that the employees and all the, I keep calling them volunteers, but they actually get paid, right? So, well, what do we call them? We don't call them volunteers. We don't call them employees, but the poll workers, poll workers, all the poll workers. And then, you know, it's, so democracy isn't easy. It shouldn't be easy. It's very hard. I want to thank everybody. First of all, congratulations to everybody who won, but I also want to thank everybody who put themselves out there. It is very hard. You have some very difficult conversations. I know I had very difficult conversations, but you meet some of the best people, and you have some of the best conversations you'll ever have, running for office. And, you know, I always say the voters are the customer, and the customer is always right, and so the voters made their choice, and that's how democracy works, and I wouldn't have it any other way, frankly. This is a great country that we live in. You know, I can go anywhere I want to, and nobody stops me and asks me for my papers, right? So, this is what it takes to make our democracy work, and I'm so glad that we had, you know, so many people running, and they, you know, took this seriously. So, and then, having said that, I just, again, want to say thank you to everybody who came out and voted, not just for me, but just came out and voted. I think it was very important. So, I guess that's all I have. I can, I can go on. Did I say I want to thank everybody who came out and voted? I think I said it twice.
One more time.
Yeah, one more time, thanks for everybody who came out and voted. There was something else, but I lost, I lost track of thought, so.
If you remember, let me know.
I'll raise my hand again, but thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yanez. Mrs. Arkow.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Go on.
Go ahead. No, I'm sorry. No, I want to say something about Mrs. Kosky. How could I forget? I apologize. Yeah, so, you know, obviously, this chair sitting next to me here is empty. You know, I've been sitting next to Mrs. Cox, Kosky for six years, and I actually got to be known as her work husband, I think, for some time, but I, I had, I had a phone conversation with her just about every week. I called just to check and see how she was doing, and I couched it as, well, we wanted, I wanted to talk about something important, but, you know, since her, you know, she lost her son four years ago, she lost her husband a couple years ago, and I was just calling to check in on her, and she was such a wealth of information, still is. She's still a wealth of information. It was always great to just sit here and, whether it's sitting here and talking with her, or going over to her house, you know, telling me about something that happened back in the 90s, and she remembered. I was smart as a whip, sharp as a tack, and she remembered every detail, and she would say, oh, I have some papers about that, and she'd go digging around and find these papers from the early 2000s. She kept all that stuff, and she was just a great councilperson. She believed in the city. She believed in good governance. She believed in working for the people. Again, she still does. And she was a great resource, a great asset, a great friend. I'm still going to call her once a week, just to check in on her, and she will be met. I'm still going to call her once a week, just to check in on her, and she will be missed, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yanez, Mrs. Zarko.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. First of all, I want to thank the city administration, and especially the city clerk. When we have an election, it's all hands on deck, and that's what I really like about the city, because I bet there was an administrator sitting in their office yesterday, because they are out doing something for all of us as a community. So I want to thank the entire administration and staff for the great job that we did yesterday, because it couldn't happen without them. Thanks to the voters that came out and, you know, they expressed their, their right to vote. I have to tell you that this was my 12th election, I think, and as I watched how elections have changed over the years, this one is probably was the toughest, and I think part of it was the atmosphere that we have in our country right now. It's the lack of trust, it's the lack of believing, and it's, it was noticeable, and, but it didn't stop people from wanting to serve, because that's what this is all about. So I want to thank everybody that voted, not just for me, but for anybody that was willing to put themselves out there to be leaders in this community. So, and I thank them all for participating in the process. The other thing is, I've worked with Mrs. Koski for 24 years, and I don't think there was a meeting that I came to, or an event that I went to, that she didn't say to me, I like your hair, I like your jewelry, I really like that jacket. So she was very complimentary, and it was just female fun stuff, where'd you shop for that? So although it was business here at the table, there was another relationship behind the doors, and that's probably what I'll remember about her as well. So, Deanna, we miss you already, and we hope you're watching, and hope to see you soon, because you will always be a part of the Sterling Heights family. You gave 36 years to this city, which is more than half of its history. So this is something that we all have to remember. It's 36 years, it's like having a career at a business, or a job that you've had, and she was willing to do this time and time again, and we just want you to make sure that you're still welcome here, anytime you want to come and tell us what to do.
She's not shy.
No. And the other thing is, is we talked about Veterans Day next Tuesday, however, at the Sterling Heights Used Bookstore, it's going to be Veterans Month, and veterans can come in and choose any items that they want, up to 10, for free, and we hope you'll take advantage of that, because we have a great selection, and maybe some of you are now retired, and you're at home, and you want something to do, and the winter months are coming, so stock up on your books, and you can come back more than one day. So anyway, thank you, and nothing further.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Zarko, anyone else? Mr. Radke?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the voters for returning me to office. I want to thank the city for running an excellent election. I've worked in politics for more than 20 years, and I've seen a lot of elections in a lot of places, and I think there are few cities in this state that run elections better than we do, both at the polling locations and just accounting how efficient we are. So thank you, Mrs. Ryska, thank your employees, they did an excellent job. And the other thing I want to say is, we always have a very good situation at the polls. I think people are respectful, they exchange their views, they vote. I'm honored that so many people came out to vote for this council. It's always very humbling to win elections. I was talking to someone earlier today, and, you know, elections are snapshot in time, but it's like, it's like the temperature gauge, like, how are you doing? And elections kind of tell you, the next, the next day after, you know exactly where you stand with the people of this community. So for the folks who, who ran for office and were unsuccessful, thank you for trying. For those of us who won, welcome back, or welcome. I think we're going to do great things in the next four years. This community is on the rise, we have done so many things. Whenever I go to a, a meeting of a statewide organization, or someplace, we, we represent Sterling Heights, they always come to us and say, wow, you guys are doing such great things there, from our election administration, to our parks, to our public safety, to our programming, they want to know how we do things here, and I'm so proud of that. It's, it's very humbling, and it's, it's just, I'm honored to be reelected. We had a friendly wager, Mayor Protem Sarowski and myself, she tends to win these, it's very frustrating.
I'm sorry.
But I, I did my best, you know, we came very close, but it's, it's humbling to know that I have 10,000 voters behind me who believe in what we're doing here. It's, I'm honored. To Mrs. Koski, I will miss you. When I first got elected, we had the smaller chamber back there, before we made the renovations, I used to sit next to her back there, and she'd, she'd always, you know, she's very cagey, you know, and she'd always kind of bring up something, she's like, well, do you remember this thing? I remember when I first got elected, she's like, well, it's just like the newspaper strike, you remember the newspaper strike? And I was like, well, I was, I was seven, and she's like, shut up. But she, she was the historian, she understood everything. She would talk about people who had come before us that some of us never knew, who were council members here, and she'd tell you about this thing, or that thing, or what they said, or what they did. And I don't think we're ever going to have someone like her again, because 36 years is not just a career, it's, it's a lifetime. And she, of all things, and in politics, maybe it's a politician's trick, but she was a survivor, she always pulled through. So she went out on her feet, she should be honored for that, I wish she was here tonight. She's going to be missed, but not forgotten, I'm sure of that. And Deanna, you did the, you were, you're, you did the best, you were always classy, you were respectful, we're going to miss you here, and anytime you want to stop by, I'm sure we'll listen to you, because you still have all that knowledge that we don't have from your experience. Good luck, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Radke, Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I would like to start with saying I am humbled and honored to be reelected, to represent the residents of the city. It is very humbling that you have put your trust in me, in all of us, and, you know, we are up here doing what we think is the best thing for all of you, and by reelecting us, I think that you're pretty happy with, with some of, with most of our decisions, not all probably, but thank you to everyone who came out and voted. I, I have to thank Ms. Ryska and her staff, and, and all the employees, as everyone has said, it truly takes everybody to get us through in such a professional and accurate manner here in Sterling Heights. There's never been an issue as far as accuracy, and that's because of all of you folks, and thank you so much. I do like the addition of putting the white spray painted line where people can and cannot canvas at the polls, it was very distinct. There was always that gray area of where you can go, where you shouldn't go, so that was very helpful, please continue to do that. And all of the poll workers were extremely polite, and came out and checked to make sure everybody was behaving, and, and I did, really did not hear of any issues that went on at the polls. I, I just think it's so important that people come out and exercise that right, you know, we had men and women that sacrificed their life for us to be able to go out and vote yesterday, and make this a free country. So it's important that, that you do your, your duty, your civic duty. I also wanted to mention that the annual DPW is doing their food drive, very important, especially right now with all the layoffs and shutdowns and everything else going on. You can drop off monetary donations, gift cards, or non-perishables here at City Hall, at the library, at DPW, pretty much, I think, any city building, Mr. Vanderpoel.
Any building but the fire station, so Community Center, Senior Center, DPW, City Hall, so yes, many options.
If you do have a few spare cans, you know, please feel free to, to share those with members of our community, because it stays within our community, and that's a really huge help. Mrs. Koski, 22 and a half years I served with Mrs. Koski, and I have to say, my kids grew up with her grandkids, and she is such a wealth of knowledge. And I remember when we celebrated the 50th anniversary, Mrs. Koski actually gave me the old pins, the old city council pins, and I have those in my jewelry box at home, and it was so special, it meant so much to me, that she thought that I deserved to have, you know, the, these pins from before, way before I was on council, I have my current city council pin, but she knew everything, and you know, she always had a different way of looking at issues. She would bring things up that I didn't think of, because she just thought of things that, over the years, she learned what, what questions needed to be asked sometimes, that, that some of us never thought of. So, Deanna, you are an inspiration, you are a strong woman, and we thank you for your service, this city owes you a lot. Your family, you know, I know my family was young when I got on council, I actually had a conversation with her son yesterday at the polls, and they were pretty young too, and, you know, he, he says, I grew up in this, and I said, well, my kids know exactly how you feel, because they grew up in this, the mayor's kids grew up in this. So, you know, our families are involved just as much as we are sometimes, if not more, and so I thank your family, Deanna, the, the Koski family, and you're not going anywhere. We, we are going to lean on you for that historical knowledge, and please, please, please stay involved in our community, we need you. So thank you for everything, and take your time, take your time, but thank you, thank you, thank you. Nothing for the mayor.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. I too want to take an opportunity to thank the voters for participating in the election yesterday, participating in democracy, as Mr. Yanez said. It is an incredibly important integral aspect of our society, of our form of government, and we, we cannot forget that, we must not forget how important that is. Democracy, elections by the people, your vote matters, and I'm grateful to the 18,000-plus people who, who showed up, not just yesterday, but over the course of the, the week before at early voting, and through absentee voting as well, which started back at the end of September. So as, as all of my colleagues have done as well, I want to thank the, the city clerk, Ms. Ryska, and her team, because this is not just a one-day thing, this is, this is something that transpires over weeks, if not months, and, and it takes a big, big effort, so thank you for what you've done, and we have an incredible professional clerk and dedicated staff, and we, we know that the results, we can be confident in the results here because of the work that they do. To the people who voted for me, I want to thank you, to the people who didn't vote for me, I want to thank you again for showing up and being part of this process. Each one of us is better, knowing that we're not getting 100% of the vote, it means we have things to improve on, it means that we, we have to continue to dedicate ourselves to the work, and so it's a reminder to all of us that there's more that we can do. So again, I want to thank, thank the voters. I'm not going to be here, unfortunately, next week. The swearing-in ceremony is on Wednesday, November 12 of next week, and I have an unavoidable conflict, I will be out of town. So I'll take this opportunity to, to say the things that I would have then. Of course, for my wife and children, who, who share me with this job, which I am passionate about, I want to thank them so much for, for all the love, support, and, and allowing me to do this, because it does take away time from a private sector job, it takes away time from my family, but I try to do, I try to include them as much as I possibly can in, in this job, because to me, that's what this is all about. It's about building a community, it's about serving your community, and, and that is my immediate community, my wife Christina, my kids Clara, Hudson, and Teddy, so I love you guys, and I thank you, my parents, my siblings, my aunts and uncles that have been part of this journey with me for the past 16 years, have, have just been incredible, their support, their love, encouragement, I certainly couldn't do without it, and, and I just, again, want to thank the residents of this amazing community. I sometimes feel, and I've said it at, at meetings, like, you know, when we're honoring somebody, I, I feel like I, I've just locked into the best political position in the country. I know that there was a time when I was a younger man than I am now, many fewer gray hairs, that I wasn't, I was, I learned on the job, we talked about this a little bit last night, I learned on the job and grew into the job, and there was, I think, a long period of time where people looked at me and thought, well, he's not going to be here for very long, he's climbing the ladder, he's going to go to state rep, and then go to this, and go to that, and I can pretty confidently say that, that this will be my last political job. I'm not going to close any doors, but I, I can't imagine another job better than being the mayor of the town that you live in, that you're raising a family in, and the, the ability to serve here in my hometown in this role, in this position, has been a dream come true for me. It is the highest honor that I could imagine, and so I'm going to dedicate myself to, to this, this job for the next four years, just like I have for the last 16 years, and I'm incredibly grateful to the people out there who've, who've shown their confidence and trust and support in me, and, and if you didn't vote for me, if, if you don't think that I'm the right person for this job, my hope is that over the next four years, I can convince you otherwise, or I can at least show you that I'm doing my best, I'm trying every day to be a mayor that can serve every one of the residents of this city, every stakeholder, every business owner, every student in every school, every, everybody who lives, works, travels through this city, my aim is, is to provide the best possible service. And, and as I said, I, I feel incredibly blessed and lucky, I've had a team around me for the last, I think, seven years. Henry, did you, did you get sworn in in, like, January of 2019?
19, yeah.
Yeah, so all of 19, 20, 21, it's, it's been, it's been, I think, seven years of this same team, this same team, and, and even though, and we've had, of course, Mr. Vanderpoel the whole time I've been here, faces in City Hall have changed, and incredibly, as one department head retires, and we think, man, that, that person is irreplaceable, the next person up steps up and does just as good a job, and so that's, that's really been a blessing to be a part of, and I, I'm so excited to continue this and to continue to play a part in it. So I want to thank, again, my family, my supporters, my friends, anybody who, who helped get me to where I am, I'm just incredibly grateful for that. I want to take a moment to talk about Councilwoman Koski as well. I've served on council and as the mayor for the past 16 years, and so when I began, I was in Mr. Yanez's seat, and so Mrs. Koski was my seatmate. We had some ups and downs, I'll tell you, but there, there's no denying that, that Deanna Koski devoted her entire professional life to service, to serving the residents of this community, something that I've, I've done as well. You know, I, I don't think I'll make it 36 years here, and it's amazing to think of that. I was doing the same calculation on my drive over here, so we have 24 meetings a year, we have two budget meetings every April, I don't know what they were doing in their late 80s and early 90s, but, but it's probably even more than that. Strategic planning, sometimes we have two strategic plannings. I mean, she, she had to have done about 30 council meetings on average a year for 36 years. I, I can't, I can't imagine the dedication that she had to this role, at, at least 1,000 council meetings, it, it's just remarkable. I want to make sure to not talk like Ms. Koski is not with us anymore, she's very much with us, she's very much a spitfire, a pit bull, I, I did not like tangling with her, and I picked my spots where I felt I had to, from time to time, because she was very energetic, just an absolute... to time because she was very energetic, just an absolute wealth of knowledge in terms of the history of the city of Sterling Heights, what's happened here over these last 36 years. She is an institution that will continue to live on through this council for many, many, many years. She served with countless councilmen and women. She served with multiple mayors. She served with multiple city managers, multiple police chiefs and fire chiefs and city clerks, and on and on and on and on, and as, you know, I can't, as I was saying, as all of those people were changing, we'd get it, we'd have one chief, and then a new chief would come in, and whether it's police or fire, DPW, or city clerk, or the library director, you name it, as these people change over, the level of service, there's no drop-off, and Deanna Kosky was one of the only things that remained consistent throughout all that time. And I don't think that that's just a coincidence. So, Councilwoman Deanna Kosky, you will be very missed. You are an institution in this city. You deserve to enjoy retirement however you see fit, and if you do intend on being involved in this city in any way, I know that the members of this council will find a way for you, and I don't even think we need to. I think you've been around long enough that you'll figure it out on your own, but we'll be here to support you, and thank you for your service, 36 years. With that, I did receive an email from Mrs. Kosky's daughter-in-law that she asked me to share tonight. So, I'll read what Mrs. Kosky wrote. Dear voters and residents of Sterling Heights, I want to sincerely thank everyone who supported my campaign for Sterling Heights City Council. While we came up short this time, I could not be prouder of the positive, community-focused campaign we ran, one centered on respect, integrity, and love for our city. To my family, friends, volunteers, and every voter who believed in me, thank you. Your encouragement, hard work, and faith have inspired me every step of the way. To those who will be serving on council, congratulations. I wish you wisdom and success as you lead Sterling Heights forward. This isn't goodbye. It is just the next chapter. I will always be here to support our city whenever and wherever it's needed. Thank you, Sterling Heights. It has been an honor to serve as your councilwoman. With gratitude and all my best, Deanna Kosky. So, thank you, Deanna. On behalf of 135,000 residents, tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of other residents who've lived here and benefited from your leadership, millions of people across the state of Michigan, when you served in a leadership role in various organizations, all have a debt of gratitude to you, and this is thankfully not goodbye. It's just, let's turn this page and move on to another chapter, and an incredibly storied and a life that many, many people should be proud to have played a part in. I know I certainly am. So, with that, I will, on one final note, just say, Mrs. Kosky's replacement, Mr. Rob Majak, congratulations, but man, oh, man, you've got a big, big void to fill, and I know the feeling, okay, because there was another one that was every bit as much a legacy as Mrs. Kosky, who I've been trying to replace for 11 years. So, with that, counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. (applause)